Good morning. The State Board of Education on its Wednesday session is called Order. Please notice that nine board members are present in the room. Mr. McNeese is in the building and will be counted as present because he'll be back shortly. Please review the agenda. I do not anticipate the need for item number six. So the approval of the agenda will be item one through five, and there was a motion to approve would be appropriate. At this time, Deena makes that motion. Is there a second? Betty makes that, seconds that motion. All in favor, please raise your hand. Opposed, the motion carries nine zero. Thank you very much. At this time, one of the exciting things we do is recognize excellence. And I believe Scott is going to introduce the winning Washburn Rural debate team.
Thank you Chairman Porter, members of the State Board, and thank you Commissioner Watson for this opportunity. This is a big change of pace for me because I never get to talk about the good stuff. And so I asked for the opportunity, and I'm very excited to introduce to you and talk about the winning season that Kansas has had in high school debate this year. Your vision is that Kansas leads the world in the success of each student? Well, Kansas certainly leads the world of debate. This year, Kansas has swept the four national titles. The titles include Free State High School in Lawrence won the Tournament of Champions this year, Shawnee Mission South won the National Catholic Forensic League Grand National Tournament, and sitting behind me are two high school debaters that won two more national titles. And it is my great honor and privilege to introduce their coach, the Tim Belsh Award-winning coach, Tim Ellis, to tell you more about how they won those national titles and the work that went into it, and for him to introduce his debaters and his assistant coach. Coach, you're the floor.
Thank you, and thank you all so much for having us here this morning. I think it's, I mean, obviously, Kansas winning all of the sort of national championships this year speaks volumes to the work that's being done across the state to, you know, have quality educational opportunities both in the classroom and extracurricularly for our students, quite frankly, without the support that we've received from a litany of different places. The successes that we have had would be impossible. So I would like to thank you all genuinely for all of the support that you all offer to make education in the state of Kansas incredible. For those of you who don't know more about just policy debate in general, the event that the schools from across the state won this year is a combination of communication skills, research skills, and persuasion skills that force students to interact with a variety of different people with a variety of different backgrounds and a variety of different arguments. This year, we were particularly debating a topic about protecting water resources in the United States. So the kids were in-depth researching things like wetlands protection or the use of aquifers that had impacts on, you know, regional things like agriculture. And the students learned a ton about a variety of different things that made them successful both inside and outside of the classroom. And I think that debate is like a truly transformational activity, and the support that we are being offered in Kansas to make that sort of activity not only educational but also a competitive success for our students is like pretty incredible. Zach and Jiun, who I'll introduce a little bit more in just a second, won two national tournaments this year. And the first one that they won, they are the only non-magnet public school in history to win that tournament. And like, it would not be possible for us to win as a public school without having a really sort of like robust public school and public debate infrastructure within Kansas that is sort of only able to be done because of the support that we are offered from administration, from our Board of Education at Washburn Rural, as well as at the state level. So sitting behind me, our first, my lead assistant coach, Sean Duff, he actually gave up the opportunity of being a head coach elsewhere in Kansas to come work at Washburn Rural because of how incredible of an environment our school offers. And I'm so lucky to have him in the building every day, driving around the country with these kids to make debate an opportunity. And then behind me are Jiun Park and Zach Willingham. Jiun and Zach have sort of like a special place in our school, not just because of the success that they've had in debate, but also because they are such good friends. They were doubles tennis partners that qualified to the state tournament twice in doubles, and then also have had two state championships and two national championships in debate. So we could not be more proud of the work that they did. They would work countless hours outside of school researching, practicing, and mentoring our younger students. In fact, over the summer, when our students were attending debate camps, Jiun and Zach were still offering them advice even as graduates to help sort of the legacy of Washburn Rural debate continue even after they've graduated. So I could not be more proud of the work that they did, and I could not be more thankful of all the support that you all have offered us to be as successful as we've been. So, thank you.
And then if you want to go ahead and introduce your debaters?
Oh, yeah. Sorry. This is, Zach Willingham's behind me, right here. Yeah, yeah, come on up. And then Jiun Park, and Sean Duff, my head assistant coach.
We certainly want to congratulate you on this tremendous honor that we're all aware of the fact that it takes tremendous work and support to do that. And we commend you, we commend your school, we commend the environment that you talked about, and are so proud that you are here today. Any of you want to say anything? This is your opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you all. This is a huge honor just to even be here. I never pictured, when I joined debate four years ago, because my mom made me for speech credit. It's truly an honor to be here, talking to you.
I assume you got the credit.
I did. Yeah, it is pretty cool to sort of figure out that like Washburn Rural, a pretty big school, but in context of the nation, a lot smaller to, and just Kansas in general, to sweep four nationals and for us to win two of them. And to end up here is not how I thought I'd envisioned my summer ending. I figured it'd be like in my house, but instead I woke up at 8:00 AM to be honored, so.
Well, we, if you don't mind having your picture taken with old people, we'd like to have picture taken at the end of this, but there's some questions first. And first, I'm going to call on my colleague Ann Ma.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and congratulations, you guys. What, I mean, it is a legacy. I remember at the breakfast, the Auburn-Washburn breakfast, they talked a lot about mentoring aspect and how the continuing legacy at Auburn-Washburn. Can you tell us a little bit about how important was the mentoring maybe you got and what you got out of mentoring you gave younger students?
Certainly. The only reason that I continued in debate is because I had older mentors, friends, like seniors when I was a freshman, that helped me through it, taught me how to do it, taught me how to have funding activity as well. So I feel it's my responsibility because I was given that mentoring, to also give that back as well to upcoming freshmen, sophomores, to juniors, because that is like how the program succeeds. It's not one year, one class, but a legacy of continuing to mentor former and, sorry, like incoming students.
I was a little different than Zach. I was probably the most annoying freshman and sophomore of the year. I would ask the older kids so many questions, always text them. And I knew sometimes I got on their, like, got on to them because they like give me two-word responses and be like, go away, like, go to bed or something. They were always super nice, always really helpful. And so I, like, similar to Zach, I always feel like I can do the same thing for our freshmen and sophomores to make sure the program stays successful.
And Jiun might not want to mention it, but he had a unique mentoring experience because his freshman year, his older brother was a senior who went on to win nationals. The National Speech and Debate Association National Tournament that year was won by his older brother. To my knowledge, he might be the only two brothers that have won the tournament as well. But, so he had a lot of, you know, helpful.
A small amount of help.
Yeah, a little bit of.
Well, I know we talk a lot about, you know, academics are important, but the real-life skills that you get out of extracurricular activities are even more important. Can you tell us maybe one thing or two that you got out of debate you think will help you be successful in life?
I think I've learned a lot of just how to like talk to people and engage people, especially like now with how politics unfolds and like how everything else unfolds. Like talking to like one party or the other is a lot more difficult. And even like with my parents, like, we all think the same politically, but I might think something a little more extreme than them, or they might think I'm wrong about something. But it's a lot easier with my parents or like teachers or other adults to talk about conversations that I didn't think I'd have. And like, the depth that I got into when I like looked into real-life events or like watched the news was just like, hey, like, X thing happened, but now I sort of understand what, like, why events happened and do a little more research and try and understand issues a little more than like the surface level.
Yeah, so every round is judged by either one judge or a panel of judges, which forces you as a debater to accommodate and adapt to each individual judge. That forces you to argue persuasively in some instances or technical in others. For example, there's a debate coach versus a parent of a debater. You're going to have to debate very differently. So debate teaches you to accommodate in different ways, different people, to resonate your argument with them, and clearly communicate with different kinds of people.
So it frustrates you to debate in front of people who know way less about this than you do?
I will answer that. I will sort of answer that for them. The first tournament that they won, that were the only, or the first national tournament they won, that we are the only non-magnet public school that has won that tournament, they debated almost exclusively in front of college debaters and coaches. The second national tournament that we won, we debated in front of parents, we debated in front of retired coaches, we debated in front of people who had never watched a debate round before, we also debated in front of college coaches. So like, it sort of depends. And I think one of the things that makes our program unique is that we don't focus on either aspect of debate, and we use different skills for different rounds. You know, one round, we might sort of focus more heavily on the research that we do in the classroom, and then other rounds will focus more on like the persuasive aspects of debating in front of people who don't have as much experience as we do.
Right. Well, congratulations. I can't wait to see what you guys do.
And I think you just told us it's important that you read your audience, so I'm going to be very careful not asking you what you're reading about us. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Congratulations. It's great to see that. I know Bill's in the background, he knows this, but I'm going into my 16th year as assistant debate coach with a very strong program at Sterling High School. That one's a lot of, we won our first year. And it's a storied program, and I see the skills that I use. I would not be sitting here without anything that I learned. And I was terrible in high school. I will tell you that. I was awful. And then it clicked afterward. It was one of those that clicked after about a year away, and I came back to it, and I'm a lot better now. These people will probably argue with you on that, but it's a huge honor. And I've always thought that, in my neck of the woods, we have a lot of good debate programs in the middle of the state. And I know there's a lot of good ones up here, and we usually don't see each other until the very end of January. And the skills that you learn are amazing, and the ability to have civil conversations around two different matters. And we've touched some, in my 16 years, we've had some interesting debate topics. And to see kids learn how to address those in an environment, and then take that and apply it to everyday life, and that is a skill that is severely lacking in today's, today's society. And I applaud you. My colleague to my left took my question from me. You read my notes. It's called cheating in their world. So I do applaud you. That's a great honor, and Kansas has a lot of things to be proud of. We have a lot of things, and this is just one of many. So congratulations. I'm very proud of you. What, you guys are seniors this year, since you said four years. What are you guys doing, I guess, this year, now that we've started a new year?
So I'm going to KU to, I'm double majoring in poli sci and global international studies, and I'm debating at KU to continue my career, so.
I'm also going to KU to major in computer science. I'm going to take a little break on debate, maybe go to like one or two tournaments, but focus more on my education.
Melanie?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Melanie?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. Congratulations. I'm so excited for all of you. I had my first experience as a lay judge this year and got to step into the world of debate. And boy, was it a weird world for me. There's so much to learn just in terms of the process. Can you remind me what that thing is where you talk really fast? What do you call that?
Spreading.
Spreading, thank you. Spreading was a whole new world for me. I wanted to ask you, you said you talked about water. There were five topics, if memory serves, is that right, that you could choose from this year?
Yeah, I mean, so they narrow it down to one topic before the season starts, but like, we're in the process. So like, there were five topics that it got narrowed down to, from, but we only debate one topic for the whole season.
Gotcha. Okay. So my question for you is going to be, if you could tell Kansans and the folks in this room, you know, what's one thing that we should know about water?
You can go first.
You can tell us too, if you want to.
And if you want to spread while you're giving your answer, then nobody will know what you're saying.
One thing about water is that our wetlands are in danger. So there's a WOTUS rule called Waters of the United States. That's a federal protection rule for what constitutes a body of water that must be under federal regulation. Trump has rolled back those regulations, and Biden's in the process of going back to Obama's rule, but there's still uncertainty allowing pollution into vital wetlands, which is like happening in Kansas as well.
That was actually word for word what Zach said in every debate. But I guess mine would just be the amount of funding across the country on like nation, federal, and local levels for water infrastructure is like, almost never reaches the threshold it needs to, whether it's like cleaning or like lead in water systems or PFAS or forever chemicals. And so I think the issue is really underplayed and doesn't get as much attention as like the big-ticket items like immigration or healthcare or military spending or whatever else. And so I think that, the one thing, I had the same reaction that most people have, is like, what do you talk about, like, water? Like, but I think it's an issue that's really underplayed that should need some more attention, so.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And it will be important when we run out. Yeah. Jim?
Well, you've heard a lot of congratulations. I'm going to take a little different view of this and say, as coaches, you guys put in way more hours than, I was a football coach in high school many years ago. My wife was a debate coach, and she worked weirder hours and longer hours. I mean, we'd have a game on Friday night, she'd, you'd be there all day, leave at four o'clock in the morning, five o'clock in the morning, to drive three hours to some town, and then sit around and wait for your time to yell at each other, and then you'd drive back, and she'd get back like at eight o'clock at night. And what are you doing? what are you doing? Your commitment is really great. Without the fanfare, there are many debaters across the state that you represent today that don't have the honor and the privilege of being at the Nationals, but they work just as hard, they learn just as much, and their benefits to their experiences later in their life are going to be just as valuable. You know, so we want to remember all of them. And to, you guys represent all the coaches who are out there, you know, just battling. And many of them are coaches because they're early first-year, second-year teachers and the principal condiment to being a coach. And they learn to love it, just like the kids, you know. So as a former football coach, I will tell you, debate is way better. So congratulations, and please be prophets for the war, you know, advocates as you go forward, you know. Thank you for what you do. And again, congratulations on your success. And my wife will now be kind to me when I come home because I said nice things.
Ben?
Mrs. Ha, remind me of something. This resolution, now, we have a national resolution that everybody does. This resolution was written by a Kansan, was it not?
The last, so the upcoming one also was, but this one was written by Pam McComas, who is a retired coach from Topeka High School, has been very involved with the Kansas High School Activities Association. And this year's upcoming resolution was also written by Pam and a few other people, a few other former students of hers. Peter Kervosrod, who's a coach down in Wichita right now, and then Luke Brinker, who I competed against in high school at Topeka High, but now lives overseas, so.
Yeah, and I, it might be fair. How many of, in the last, I think, 10 years, how many of the resolutions have been written by Kansans? And these are voted on by coaches from across the country. It's not just.
So this year's is, last year's was, four years ago, the arms sales topic was, two out of the five that we're voting on for next year are written by a Kansan, so, a lot of them.
Yeah, so there's a huge influence that we have nationally, and it was Melanie that was asking, oh yeah, that was a neat thing. So anyway, thank you.
Well, thank you very much. We are very proud of you. You represented well. And we recognize the work that all, that goes into all of this, and you really, we really appreciate you. First of all, you thanked us for letting you come. We thank you for coming, because you're the ones that did the work, and you're the ones that need to be honored. And this is kind of the fun thing that we do to get to recognize excellence. So if you'll meet in front of the desk, I'll ask my colleagues to join us, and we'll have a picture. And then you can get on with your lives.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Thanks for staying.
Okay, board members, please take your seats. At this time, I'm going to open the hearing on the proposed amendments to the KESHA, KSA 2014 supplemental 72-7114. The procedure will be as follows. We will start with a presentation from KESHA by Bill Faflick. He will be given, we will hold any questions to Mr. Faflick until he is finished, and then we will have time for the board to ask questions of him. Then we will have three proponents. We will listen to all three proponents uninterrupted. And then if the board has questions, we ask the proponents to remain until the end of that process, so that if there are questions, they can ask them. At the end of that time, there are three opponents. We will ask the same procedure. All three of them will be able to make their presentation uninterrupted. And then if the board has questions, they can answer, they can ask those questions at that time. The board will not be voting, we will have plenty of time to discuss at the end, but the board will not, this will be an action item for the board during the September meeting. Depending on the timeframe, there's possibility we'll take a break sometime in the middle of all this, but that, that depends on how you go. So, Bill, it's all yours? Oh, there's, there is a lot of written testimony that's on the website and is available to all members. If anybody else wants to provide written testimony, the deadline for actually making presentations, by the way, this is not part of your time, this is, was five o'clock Monday, so if anybody came expecting to speak, you had to have been in that process. But we will still accept written comments after this point. Now, Bill, go ahead. Welcome to the State Board.
Thank you, Chairman Porter, members of the board. Commissioner Watson, thank you for the opportunity to bring an item to the State Board of Education that has been on the minds of our membership for a number of years. And I look forward to sharing the update for you on this topic, and we'll see if we can move forward through the presentation. So this topic is about classification and the opportunity that we have to reformat a longstanding tradition of how we classify schools. Classification is the method that we use as an association to compete for championships at the end of the high school season. Championships are won by groups of schools that are demographically alike with the single demographic feature until this presentation today. And as we move forward, depending upon the outcomes, the student attendance at a school, the size of the school. And we know that the size of the school allows for a number of kids to participate in the variety of activities that we administer. And this classification proposal would change this protocol by adding a multiplier to that. So I want to talk a little bit about the purpose, the authority that you have as the State Board to move this to the next step. The history of our classification discussions, I won't go all the way back, but we'll go back a little bit in time so that you'll have a sense of the context in which we're operating now, provide the details on the specific proposal that our membership has taken the first steps to approve, then provide the very specific request for you, which will be fairly simple. And then the next steps in terms of application of a potential modification to our classification system. So with that, I want to start with the authority that we have and the purpose I've already explained, that we're going to ask you at the end of this time, which will be considered and then decided in September, to forward our recommendation, our approved system to the legislators, because this is a statute-driven decision. And before we go to the statute, we wanted to know what our membership thought. We felt like it was very important to hear from our member schools, and then to take it to the State Board, and then to go ultimately to our legislators, so they know exactly what our, our membership would like to see happen. Kansas statute does put into effect the authority that the association has to conduct our business. And as you see on item number four in 72-7114, we do get to come to the State Board, make an annual report, but we also, anytime we have a bylaw change, or anytime we have a change to any of our articles of incorporation, we come to the State Board for approval, so that it's one more set of ears that is weighing in on the important topics that we decide. Very seldom do we come before you, which is a good thing with these types of decisions, but when we do, it is an important and a weighty topic. And certainly the one that we have before you is of that gravity. And specifically, what we're looking for is paragraph A5, where the legislators have put into place a statute that says that we shall establish a system of classification of member high schools according to student attendance. Well, student attendance is one thing. That's how many kids are in the building. And we count on September 20th, just like all of our schools do. We classify our schools based upon the data that is reported on September 20th, and we classify two different ways. First, we classify for all of our activities except for football, and we do that annually. And we simply combine the enrollment of all of our grades nine through 12. That determines for that year all of the championships that we conduct. It's a quick turnaround from September 20th until early October, when we start our first round of championships, but we've made that work with staff that had known the system and have worked very hard to make that the reality. The football classification is a little bit different because we have projections for two years out, and we use grades nine through 11 for our football classification counts. And that goes into effect the year following because that season is underway. Football is unique in terms of the fact that the regular season games often determine what your postseason assignment will look like in terms of competitions within defined groups called districts, or at the 4A, 5A, 6A level, your overall record. As we've gone through the process that we're going through and bringing to you today, we've tried to be very methodical, because this is a very big issue. We've also tried to be inclusive and transparent, because that's kind of the hallmark of the association. There have been multiple opportunities for our schools to weigh in, for our communities, our stakeholders to weigh in on this. And certainly, the product, the end product that we bring, does bring into account modifications that have occurred since the initial proposal was developed. So our process has been simply to come up with any amendment to the association, which goes through the first step, which is a board of director approval. Because this is classification, we also take this proposal to our membership. And our membership vote on a school-by-school basis. So all of our high schools, this does not impact our 400-plus middle school members, because we don't have championships at the end of the middle school seasons. But at the high school, we have all of the schools voted on this and supported that after the board of directors approved it, of course. So the first trigger is our board of director approval. And a lot of folks don't want to know, don't, won't know how to vote until they know what the details are. So we'll get to those details as we move through today. So we did get that approval. We did get the approval of our, our member schools. Now we come to you for the State Board approval to move to the next step, which would be that legislative remedy that, that we are seeking. In terms of the specific timeline, working backwards, on April 29th, we did have a board of directors vote. That board of directors voted to support the proposal that was written by a vote of 43 in favor and 21 opposed. We do have a very large board, and they did vote in support of passing this on to the next step. And the next step was sending it to the member schools. Soon after that meeting, the month of May, and the first couple of weeks of June, we asked our member schools, what did they think about this proposal? Does it take the next steps or does it die? It did take the next steps because it passed our vote the way we counted two different ways. The majority of the schools supported it, 219 in favor. And then the majority of classes impacted, four of the six supported it as well. Both of those benchmarks needed to be attained in order for us to come to you today. So on behalf of the membership, I'm sharing with you what they have supported and what we want to have happen as we move forward through this process. So we look forward to the next step being initiated today, which is your consideration, and then your determination in September, and then we would go to our legislative bodies in the spring, in, starting in the next calendar year. So our Rule 5 classification, our handbook rule that deals with classification is Rule 5. And Rule 5 is, in the handbooks that have been provided to you, and I know that you've had the opportunity to study those and memorize those, but in reality, you only go to those when you need to. And Rule 5 is the one that we look at. This particular revision that we're asking for your consideration today impacts a multiplier. And a multiplier would artificially inflate that September 20th count to potentially move some schools to a higher classification. When they move schools up, other schools may be moved down. So the championship factor, the geographic factor, and the poverty factor are three things that a committee, a work group of educators and stakeholders that met a couple of different times worked on to develop the details that would be so important to have this move forward. Before we got to that point, I'm going to go back just a short period of time to the time that your kids were alive and part of this discussion, and certainly since the association. And I've been involved with the association now in my, starting my fifth year, working with this. But as a, as a longtime school and district administrator, have been involved with this discussion on classification for a number of years. In 2006 and '07, because it was a hot topic, Mr. Musselman, my predecessor, put in place a classification study committee. And that committee looked at this topic holistically, looked at all of the factors that are involved with private schools and public schools. It had a period of a year and a half where we met, and we met in person, always in the office. We had the full supportive staff. They provided incredible amounts of data for the committee to review. And ultimately, the data didn't lie. The data reflected that at that time, 27 private schools, which is 7% of the membership of the association, won a disproportionate number of championships, usually 20 to 25%, depending upon the year. The average over the last 10 years would be about 21 or 22%. So we look at that and wondered, okay, what is, what's the story there? How is that the reality? Is this a fair and level playing field for our member schools to compete against and compete within? So we also recognize that there have been tremendous private schools, but also public schools that have a history of strong success. You just saw a school that has had tremendous success, not just in debate, but in athletics. So I think that as you looked at this topic, and as we as an association have looked at, we've always tried to remember that public and private, our schools are probably more alike than they are different. But there are some, there are some differences between those. So we did look at those similarities and differences. And we also looked at the purpose behind the program and how we, how we operate and why we operate. We know that the goal of every team is to win a championship. If it's a national championship, fabulous. If it's a state championship, great. If it's a league championship, wonderful. But that's probably not the purpose of our program. In fact, it's not. The purpose of our program is to educate students, to help them be equipped to be successful in school today, and to be successful in life following their time in our K-12 system. So we do have to balance that team goal and level playing field with the purpose of the program. Why do local boards of education fund activity programs? Because they enrich students' lives, they support academic achievement, they prepare them to be successful academically, but also socially and emotionally. It's a connection point for kids, and we know that that is very, very important. We looked at budget between our, our groups, and sometimes we would talk about similarities and differences. There are similarities and differences between budgets of public and private schools. You know, everybody operates on a budget, and every athletic director I've ever known would say, or activity director, it's not a big enough budget. But it is a finite number. They operate within that. The access to resources is very different. The access to resources is very different for our publics and privates. You know, public schools have bonds, and they can build facilities, they can allocate local budgets for that. Private schools depend often on fundraising dollars, and private donations, as well as on tuition. So there's some, there's some significant differences there. Student recruitment's the same. You know, there's similarities, and there's differences. You know, recruiting is not a word that we like to use in the Activities Association vernacular. You know, it's, and topic, if you're in the community and watched the news last night, it's a big topic right now, in terms of a, a specific case. But student recruitment is about having students in your school. Public schools advertise and want kids to come to their school, just like our private schools do. There's a number of public schools that have open enrollment, more so coming in the years ahead. But certainly, we know that recruitment and getting kids in school is very important. But it shouldn't be about activities. It shouldn't be about athletic prowess. It shouldn't be about academic excellence, in terms of enticing students to come, or providing undue influence for them to come to a particular school. All of our private schools follow the same rules that our public schools do. Sometimes it's the unknown that causes people to ponder and to wonder, what's going on? Why is that success so high? We also talked about special education and the services that are provided as mandated through our public schools, and sometimes with a strong effort at our pub, private schools as well, though they may have to defer to the public sector in order to provide all of the resources that some students may need. So there are those similarities and differences. And certainly, as we talk about the outcomes of that committee, a lot of that hasn't changed. What has changed are those voices around this item, the continued success of some of our private schools, the continued success that, that they have demonstrated by winning championships and, and performing at that high level, often at the exclusion of other public schools that they're competing against in that postseason format. So as, as we looked at this, the committee that wound up its work did recognize those differences, recognized the similarities, asked the association to continue to, to look at this, but did ask specifically not to employ a separate class for our private schools, and not to have any type of weighting or multiplier reduction at that point. We were not charged as a committee, or that committee was not charged, to come up with a solution just to study. And that report was provided to the association, and I think was the blueprint for the next several years of what was to come from our, from our membership. So as we know, you look at success, as I referenced before, there's so many factors that contribute to the success of a program. First, you have to define what is success. And I'm here to tell you just exactly what Mr. McNeese had shared earlier today, was that teams are just as successful, whether they win a championship or not. In fact, I would tell you that they may be more successful in terms of what we want as educators and as adults, because they are providing that incentive for students to be in school every day, to be accountable, perform academically, to be accountable to perform as citizens. So you don't have to win a championship to be successful. But we know that the definition of communities is often based upon that, and we want our kids to have those opportunities, and to feel as if they have a fair chance to win at the end of the season, just like the other teams that they see, that are, they're participating against. So you can see, and I, I don't need to read through the list of, of those factors, it's not going to be an exhaustive list, but certainly, you know, some of the traditions are prevalent in private schools, as well as the public schools, that seem to, to win again, and again, and again. So again, the, the final conclusion was that we recognized that there were some inequities. That committee recognized that the inequities existed, but you know, was an opportunity for us to continue to grow, to continue to build. So this provided the blueprint for what was next, and there have been a lot of things that have happened since that study committee concluded their work. First, strategic planning. Strategic planning took place, and one of the items that came out of strategic planning was to continue to study and to continue to evaluate this particular item of public and private. The educate, the, the neighboring states we count on in the National Federation of High Schools, our association that governs us, we look at the Big Twelve states, the other states that are like us, and see what they're doing. And we look across the country to see what's been successful. Missouri's been in front of our board, and in front of our work groups and committees on a couple of different occasions, multiple different occasions, to share about their multiplier, and how it worked, and how it didn't work. And the fact that, you know, while it was in place, it didn't really impact the number of championships, and it made feel, student, schools and school leaders feel like, hey, we're doing something to make this more equitable for all folks, for all of our students and all of our programs. We looked at, one of the things the association did was look at, you know, that socioeconomic factor, and deployed a study that asked our students, our, our school leaders, to tell us about participation rates for our free and reduced population, as compared to the general population. Found that free and reduced students do participate at a slightly lower rate, about eleven and a half percent less participation rate among the free and reduced population compared to those non-free and reduced. So there's, in terms of getting students out, that certainly was a factor that was worthy of note, though no action resulted in that. The board continued to make some changes, to try and level that playing field, to go to a broader enrollment number that encompassed ninth graders. Ninth graders were participating on school teams, but were not counted until two thousand and eleven. That's when the ninth grade count was included with the tenth, eleventh, and twelfth grade. So that broader base of kids allowed a little bit of leveling, if you, if you would, or at least that was the desire of the board at the time, and the association, association at the time. We've also had some discussions back in the day with our four A and our one A schools, where our four A schools felt like sixty-four schools were a lot to compete against in the championship, especially when some of them were two and a half, or three times bigger than the smaller schools in that classification. And the four A classification split in two thousand and eleven. One A split also, and we did that split in select activities. In football, I'm sorry, in, in basketball, volleyball, and scholars bowl, those were the three activities that, that had that split, to make the schools a little bit closer together in terms of smallest to largest within a class. We've had a couple of proposals that have been brought forward in two thousand and twelve, football reclassification, and then in September of two thousand and twelve, the Kansas Equitable Classification Plan was introduced, but died due to a lack of motion. It was from one of our member schools. So there've been a lot of changes to that. Probably most notably, in two thousand and fourteen, the association put forth a classification study committee that was charged to bring back what was considered to be best practice. But we're asked to do that within the confines of the existing statutes and the existing policies that we had. That was a group of educators from across the state. It was thirteen teachers, coaches, administrators, that had a, a number of years of experience wearing many, many hats. Much like, like you, we wear a lot of hats. We've been teachers, coaches, administrators at the building level, at the district level. We've also been athletes, and we've also been parents of kids that participate in our activity. And those are never lost, on the decisions that are made, when decisions are made. That committee looked at over fifteen, fifty different configurations of what classification would look at, would look like if it were to change. And did end up saying, we're going to make some changes. And those changes were all within the current system of determining classification according to student attendance. So we classified football with new numbers. We went to thirty-two, 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 forty-eight, forty-eight, fifty, and forty-nine, thirty-five, forty, and fifty, and fifty-nine, or forty-nine. So we broke football down, we tried to reduce the number of championships. We don't want those watered down, and the number of general, of classification in the general sector for all other activities went to six, because we'd had as many as eight, because of the split that occurred. We did that primarily to reduce the ratio from the highest to the lowest, and, and it certainly looked like it would work historically, as well as with the trends moving forward. Because the committee looked at not just current data, but five years ago, ten years ago, twenty years ago, to see how that work would evolve over time. Finally, you know, that was approved, it was put into place to implement for the eighteen, nineteen school year. Before the eighteen, nineteen school year was even over, the one A folks said, their hundred-and-seventeen schools said, we want to split again. And so they went through the process. It doesn't come to you, because it's not a bylaw change, it's not a, it's not a statute change, it was just a classification rule change. So they split again, and they are still separate for volleyball, basketball, and scholars bowl. So we have a Division One and a Division Two, one A championship for our smallest schools. And that's a large number of schools, a hundred-and-seventeen one A schools across Kansas, and that number shrinks a little bit every year, but a hundred-and-seventeen was the, the data that we were using at the time. One of the things that we knew as we talked about this topic was there were five main buckets, or five potential areas that we could reclassify, that the committee looked at. And one of those was to use a multiplier, which is the one we're going to share with you here in a few minutes. The second was to do a success factor, based upon the success of the schools. A third was to do a reduction factor, based upon poverty of schools. So we would multiply instead of by a number greater than one, a number less than one, to make that classification number a little bit smaller for our high-poverty schools. And then the final one was a separate, a separate class. That's the fourth one. The final one actually is keep it exactly like we have it right now. So we did that survey of principals, because if you're looking at five different things, nothing would ever be supported. You know, you can't have a, a group of schools supporting a multiplier, another group supporting a reduction factor, another group supporting a separate class, and ever come to consensus that we would be able to move forward. You also couldn't do one of those and develop the breadth and depth that you need in order to get it to move forward, unless you provided that focus. So that's what the intent of that survey was. It was created by a researcher at the University of Kansas, it was unbiased, we'll give you the results of that here in just a minute. Other things that happened in that same time period, in terms of, you know, we heard a lot about transfer rule, we heard a lot about the ease it is for private schools to have kids come in, and we're treating kids differently that enrolled second semester than that enrolled first semester, because it was an eighteen-week window. So at the high school level, the board moved that to a one-year period of transfer status for our high school kids. Unless there's a hardship or a modified move that occurs, then it's, you know, immediate eligibility under, under our rules. In September of two thousand and nineteen, while we were trying to narrow that down, you know, a group decided, well, we're going to at least try the separate class. And on September, September's board meeting in two thousand and nineteen, a proposal for a separate class for our private schools was made, was discussed at the board, and then it was defeated by a vote of forty-six to twenty-one. So we kind of moved that one out to the side and looked at the remaining four as, as we continued to work. That principal survey took place, and it seems like a long gap between two thousand and nineteen and February and June of two thousand and twenty-one. But you've got to remember, we were dealing with some environmental issues at that point in time, that really took our focus away from championships, and really returned to, let's find a way for kids to participate. We, we had to adjust for COVID, we had to delay our focus on some of the priorities, so we could focus on that priority during that period of time. Finally, that work group did convene. It was intended to be a two-meeting work group of representative administrators and coaches and parents from across the state, that represented both public and private schools. And they met first via Zoom to kind of get the background of all of the information, and they got a lot of information from the association. The history, as well as the current status. And then they met in our office for one full day, and we spent one day working on developing the details behind this multiplier. We took those details to our regional administrator meetings that are conducted in October every year, across the state. We tour the state and do seven different meetings, and we get feedback. And during that feedback, we have the opportunity to tweak. And we did tweak this proposal as a result of that feedback, and the final verdict, or the final product is the one that you'll see. That final product did go to our board, and as I shared with you at the beginning, was, was supported. So the survey that we talked about, that I, that I referenced before, was completed by high school principals, one per school, and it asked the, the school leaders to help us identify what is the most important topic. And they said, a multiplier for our private schools is the overall weighted winner for that topic. So we set out with the work group to develop those details, so people would understand what they're working on. This is the actual response data from that, and you can see that the weighted one, that one up at the top, the determined multiplier, had a hundred schools, and that was their number one. But the, if I just went by number ones, we would have said, we're staying exactly where we are. Because student attendance according to, you know, to determine classification was, had a hundred-and-twelve schools. But when you apply the weighting down the line, it fell into that second, into that second place. And we looked at the different potential scenarios of a multiplier for private schools, a multiplier for any school with open enrollment, private and public, because we had a number of schools with open enrollment, and how much more like privates are those schools with open enrollment? So we looked at all of those, we looked at the success factor, we looked at all of the different factors, and ultimately ended up with that particular weighting. And that's why the work group focused on that multiplier for private schools. That was at the direction of building leadership, district leadership at that time. So we took that in October to the regional administrators, and they said, yes, we need to, we need to move that forward. So it was placed on the agenda for our April consideration. Here are the details behind the particular proposal, the multiplier that is in place. There are three factors. And the first factor is a gatekeeper. And this gatekeeper says, we believe that the championships that are won in a disparate manner, in an imbalanced manner, have contributed to this, so let's let that be a gatekeeper. And we know as building athletic directors, and as the committee talked about this, and as staff talked about this, if you win a state championship every year over a period of time, that's a pretty good year. Okay? If you win two a year, that's a really good year. So we looked at that on averages, and we said that, if we're going to win ten or more championships over a five-year period as a school, that's indicative of tremendous success, and therefore, a multiplier of point three would be added to the one-point-oh. And as I went out, yes, I did my math teacher reminder, and said, if you multiply something by one, what do you end up with?
Same thing.
Exact same thing. So I take my one, and now I add point three to the schools that have won ten or more championships over the past five years, and these are team championships. If I only won one a year, five through nine championships over the past five years, there was a factor of point one-five. If I'm not winning as a private school championships, this does not apply. None of the factors apply, because this is a gatekeeper. So private schools that don't win five or more championships in a five-year window have the exact classification as every other public school on classification count day September twentieth. So if I had a thousand students in my private school, and we win fifteen championships in the last five years, I will be counted as thirteen-hundred kids, one-point-three times that thousand base. So we worked forward from that. If I only had, if I only had won six championships in the last five years, I would have that factor of point one-five to my multiplier, so I would move up potentially, but maybe not as much. So that's the first factor. It is the gatekeeper. If you don't satisfy this as a private school, you're done, you just stay that way. However, one of the other factors that our committee looked at was the location of our schools. Those schools that reside in highly dense areas, that population density is a, a little bit more in the metro area than it would be in some parts of western Kansas or southeast Kansas, have access to resources in abundance. And those resources may be people, coaches, facilities, gymnasiums, clubs, et cetera, travel teams, and they're right there in their backyard. So our committee looked at that and said, if a successful private school is in a five A or six A community with their home address, then the multiplier, additional multiplier of point three is used. So I had the point three from the first one, and I have a point three from this, I'm up to now one-point-six. If I'm a three A, four A community, where I look at this and I, I find that, okay, I've got, you know, a three A, four A private school, my multiplier is point one-five. There's access to resources, but it might not be as abundant, it might not be as plentiful. But if I'm in a one A, two A community, if I'm in Elving, home of Marine Academy, there's not immediate access to the students attending Marine Academy. So they have no additional multiplier, no additional factor added to that multiplier. So as we looked at, at the geography, we looked at that totally by the front, by the, the front door dress of where that school resides. And you think about the pull of those kids, it's not just the access to those resources, but it's also the pull. I think of my alma mater, Wichita Southeast, and I think of, in the Wichita Southeast attendance area, is Wichita Collegiate, Wichita Classical School, Wichita Trinity Academy's just outside, the Independent School in Wichita is right there, all of those schools, right, Central Christian All of those schools, right, Central Christian Academy are in that Southeast attendance area, and they draw those kids. But all those kids that are going to those schools have access to the same resources the 5A, 6A schools in Wichita have. So that was the geographic, the geographic factor. The final factor was that free and reduced number that we had mentioned before, that factor of poverty that impacts it. Because we know that kids that are in poverty, that have homes where they may be helping support that family by paying rent, working jobs, working all summer long, may not be able to progress and access those resources or have the funds for travel teams and special coaching. So we looked at that and realized that the average free and reduced population of member schools was about 40%. So we looked at half of that and said, 20% would be a good number, good cutoff for us. If it's more than 20%, you're more like the traditional public school, and therefore, there's no factor added. However, if you don't have any free and reduced kids, or if you're not collecting that data, or if you're less than 20% with that, then you'll have an additional .15. So we took the sum of all of those and looked at what our policy would look like, and, you know, certainly, it would move some schools up. But, you know, the devil's in the details. You know, the numbers are important, and that's a starting place, but what do they mean? You know, for us, it meant that we're going to count this for all school activities. Our schools have told us historically, we want to have a school as a 5A school all the way through because we don't want to have a 5A basketball tournament in one community and a 6A basketball tournament in a separate. So this is not activity-specific. This is across the board. We also know that we want to maintain some level of ability to conduct tournaments by not adding additional rounds, which take additional time and time away from kids being in school. So we wanted to maintain 6A at 36, 5A at 36, 4A at 36, et cetera. So if a private school bumped up from 5A to 6A, the bottom 6A school now becomes the largest 5A school. And we wanted to maintain that balance with up. We also said we would not want to move a school up more than two classes or one class. The max would be one class. The multiplier also would not force a student or a school to go from eight-player football to 11-player football because that's based upon the number of kids in your building, and I can't have more kids participate when I don't have those kids. So let's not artificially inflate that. We didn't have six-player football approved at that time. We'll have that first championship this year, but the same would apply. We're not going to make a school go from six to eight or from eight to 11 based simply upon the multiplier. Football counts a football count for our six and eight-player schools. And again, a six-player school's got to have fewer than 55 kids in the building, grades nine, 10, and 11, and an eight-player school must have fewer than 100 students in the building in grades nine, 10, and 11. We said that the geographic component is based upon the address of the front door. I think I mentioned that before, and we're talking about team championship. We're talking about the overall championship for track and field. We're not talking about the 100-meter champion or a singles champion in golf or a singles champion in tennis or an individual golf medalist. We're talking about the team winning a golf title or the team winning a track championship, not just the individual. So we wanted the cumulative total of all championships won and all of the activities we administer championships to reflect this. This includes everything where trophies are awarded, with the exception of spirit because spirit's still showcase, spirit's a showcase because it's not open to every school. We have limits in terms of capacity, so you have to make an application by time to get into our spirit, our dance and our cheer showcases at the end of the year. We indicated that, you know, if we're not collecting free and reduced data, then we're going to assume zero and add the .15 to that multiplier. And we also indicated that actual process itself of once that's established is not appealable. This is what it looks like, what it would look like in our handbook. It's all of the underline that you looked at, all of the different factors that we just looked at. This is what our board approved at their April 29 meeting and the detail that comes with that. So that's, that's what we bring to you in totality. What we're going to ask the legislators to consider is to amend 72, 71, 14, A5, where it currently states to establish a system of classification for a member high schools according to student attendance and just add three words and other means. That gives us the flexibility to adjust our .15s, our .3 zeros if we need to. Without that flexibility, we're locked in if they approve it just exactly as it is written. So we hope that when the time comes, if it's approved by this body, we go to the legislators, they will recognize the fact that this is a topic that has been discussed for a number of years at the association. It's very important to our membership, and you can see by the votes that that's why we're here. You know, our membership supports it, so our staff are working hard to make sure that we bring this to, to you as it is presented and as it is ready to go. Our goal is for kids to win. But when I say win, I'm talking about being involved in education-based activities because we're kind of a dying breed right now. As the NCAA goes to more about success and about dollars, we remain committed to education-based activities, making sure kids are connected to activities where they're excited to be part of it, they feel like they have a fair shot to win, and they do so knowing that they're going to be connected to teammates, to adults, and to communities that will support them in their efforts. So that's where we are in terms of our request, which would be to ask for your input. By the way, I told you that we tweaked it after our regional meetings, coming from our student advisory team. We have a student advisory team. They're the first ones that provided input to our governing board, was make that championship factor the gatekeeper. We didn't have it. We just had all three factors regardless. The wisdom of kids said, hey, let's use this strategically, and if it doesn't apply to a school that's won one championship in the history of their school, why would they be multiplied up? Makes a lot of sense. We took that out. Our school supported that revision. Our board supported that revision, so we have now the opportunity to take the next steps with, with your consideration of this request. And Chair Rep. that's the presentation. I'm open for questions.
Okay, there will be a question. I'm going to say something that probably doesn't need to be said. This is an emotional issue. There will be people that present later on that some will disagree with the others. I will expect everybody to be treated with respect when it comes to that. I said that probably doesn't need to be said, but it's going to be said anyway. We want everybody to feel that they are respected when they come in here, and everybody's opinion is valuable. We have questions from Ann Ma.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to be clear, we don't get to tweak this, right? This is a thumbs down at our point.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Is there a list of the sports that this would impact that are team sports that we could see? I don't need it right now, but if you have that, I'd like to.
Absolutely. I will send that to you, and it's not just the team sports, but the activities of debate and speech as well.
That's what I'm wondering. What are all the things that would be impacted?
And could you send that information to Barbara, and she'll also make sure that we all get it?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
In their discussions, did they consider, I know you said, well, you wouldn't want one sport in one class and one not, but I'm not sure why. Do they consider, like, let's say we got a Rocket football team, but everything else so-so, why wouldn't you want to just move the football team up?
Yeah, and football's.
That's the only one that had ever won, for example, a state championship.
Great question. Football's already unique. It's the only one that is unique because it is a separate count by itself. But the biggest hang-up on separate classes are those events that are conducted at the same time with both genders, track and field. We could be at regional assignments in two different communities, yet they share the same coach. Cross-country, two different regionals, two different state meets potentially because we're not, Kansas is unique in how we conduct our championships. We don't go everybody to the University of Kansas or to Kansas State University for all championships. We're in different communities, seven different communities for football and eight coming up this next year, basketball the same. So if I've got teams in different places, and it's not necessarily the end game, it's also the lead-up games where I'm going to a different wrestling assignment, a different cross-country assignment depending upon my, my boys and girls. Now, we would have to do some changing if we're going to go separate by, by activity, which would be maybe separating our boys' weekend championship from our girls, but it's the whole lead-up to that as well.
Or you could send both the boys and the girls, but all that one sport. So they did talk about one sport, but I.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do we have these multipliers? I know you mentioned Missouri. Is that the only surrounding state that has one?
There, about half of the states in the country have implemented some type of factor. That means half have not. Kansas has been on the have-not side. Minnesota uses a reduction factor. Oklahoma uses a success factor. Missouri moved from a multiplier to a success factor, and a success factor is determined by how often you win, how often you participate in a championship game, how often you are in a semifinal game, in a quarterfinals, make the tournament, et cetera, et cetera. So there are a lot of models that are there. That certainly would have been one we could have developed, but our leadership, our principal said, you know, focus instead on this multiplier.
Okay. And my last question, Mr. Chair, if that's okay. I'm wondering how many and which private schools would move under this? And if it was applied to public schools, how many public schools would move? And I don't need that answer right now, but if you could do that and send it to Barbara as well.
You bet.
That'd be helpful.
Absolutely. I can answer the private school one. I think that there's a potential for maybe seven schools bumping up for that, but it's also going to change every year.
Right.
Because right now, I have another set of data, another five years of, another fifth year or most recent year of data of championships. So when we built this and looked at it, it was about seven that moved up a class.
I understand that. I'm just wondering if you applied it to public schools, how many of them would be bumped as well?
We can provide that.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ben?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. When it comes to the definition of community, is that gauged by the school district it resides in or the zip code? And my, my preface to this is, I look at Hutchinson, which is one of my larger communities in my district. Three public school districts come into Hutch. Hutch Trinity is in 308. Central Christian is in Bueller. They're a mile apart, but they're in different ones, and the difference between 5, 6A and 4A, which Bueller is, Hutch 6A, is a big difference. So I was just kind of defining community.
We define that community or that geographic factor by the front door address of that private school. So if that was a home, where would those kids go to school? So, right, Bueller would be, you know, a 4A in that community because Bueller is a 4A if they, that's where the front door is.
Okay. So that, it's not necessarily the zip code, it's the school district with which it resides in?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Janet?
I punched that for Betty, but I would like to speak after she does. Thank you.
Okay, Betty.
Okay. Thank you. And let me, let me just wrap my mind around a few things. It sounded as though the driver for this is the fact that the private schools have won a disproportionate number of times. That's the driver. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am. That data is reflective of that, yes.
So if they had not won, we wouldn't be having this conversation. Is that also correct?
Probably so.
Okay. Now, the other thing that I'm, I'm kind of curious about on this, because for me, there were two things that was being said, and so I'm trying to merge this. I served on local board in Wichita, and the way that sports was viewed was not necessarily by how many times a school won a championship. It was the opportunity for students to connect in a team spirit. On that board, we also felt like there were a lot of students that would not finish or be a part of school or education process if that wasn't available. So the priority for many of the decisions that we looked at had nothing to do with how many times a school wins or how many times a school loses. It was to promote that team spirit, that connectivity, that something that could keep a student engaged in the education process. So this is kind of a departure for me to try and, and view it in terms of winning and losing. The one thing that comes to my mind, are we saying to students, if you can't win it this way, then we're going to figure out a way to change the playing field so that winning is the ultimate outcome? And if that's the case, then I have a concern of what kind of message are we sending out to students? If you don't win, then everything else is negated. And that certainly is not what I would like to see students feel. It's not about if you don't win, that you're not a great player. I mean, that's one of the things that, that we as a state board have taken a look at. You know, it's not just the ultimate, ultimate. There are other things to be learned. So I get a little concerned about the messaging that's being sent out. So from that perspective of how I viewed sports, can you give me an idea of what this might be saying to students?
Well, I think that the messaging is important, and the value of every student is important, and that's, you know, why we count every student right now. I can't speak for those students, but certainly a topic that has been discussed amongst our leadership across the state because this is one that has been talked about for so long. I think that that message that's there versus, okay, well, I don't have a chance. What I've heard most often from parents of kids and from school leaders is our kids don't feel like they have a chance, that it's stacked against them. We, on the flip side, have heard the exact same thing. Well, do we just need to find a way to make it possible for them to win a championship? I, I hope it's not that latter, so we'll have to protect against that, but I, I don't have a good, solid answer, and we don't have data that says students feel this or the other in a preponderance of manner.
Okay. So help me understand, what's, what's stacked? See, I'm entering arena that I'm not that familiar with. What's stacked against them? I mean, it's a fair, it's a fair game, right? And somebody excels and somebody doesn't. Two great teams going head-to-head, there's got to be one that wins and one that loses. So what's stacked against them? If I could understand that, maybe it would help.
Yeah. And I think that's going to be in the perspective of each individual in terms of, am I starting on the same starting line as everybody else? Do I have the same support as everybody else that's competing for that prize? When I run 100 meters, I know exactly what that 100 meters is, and I got a stopwatch to measure it. But what support was there along the way? Did I start where everybody else started, or did I not? Did I have access to resources to, in an abundance more than the person on either side of me and the lanes on either side of me? So again, that's, I think that's going to be the perspective of every individual that's out there and certainly worthy of consideration.
Okay. And one final question. So isn't that true if we were to take away the perspective of private schools? Isn't that true even in public schools that there are some that have more support, more whatever? I mean, if that's a factor that exists just within the public schools, then if we were to expand that and add, add in private, then what's, what's, what's the difference there?
I'm not sure there is a difference between the highly successful schools. They look much more alike than they look different.
Okay. And then one final thing. Tell me how with magnet schools. I know that kids, magnet schools are big in Wichita. How many high school magnets?
There's one magnet high school, and then there's a couple alternative schools.
Okay. And so those students then play for, they get to, their enrollment is counted in those alternative schools, magnet or, but they play for a base school? How is that factored?
For purposes of funding, those students are counted in the magnet schools where they attend, but for the purposes of activity participation. But for the purposes of activity participation, they're counted in their base school. So the athletic director in Wichita knows that at Northeast Magnet, I've got, you know, of the 600 kids that are in that building, the first 150 of them belong to Heights, the next 75 are Southeast. So those numbers adjust according to where that student is eligible to participate. So we balance that out. And there's a couple of other magnet schools in other communities where that is a very similar process.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And I think, Betty, I think some of the questions that you ask are going to be addressed in the testimony that we hear later on. And it might be appropriate to ask those again to.
Okay. All right.
To those persons. Janet?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'd like to congratulate you guys for taking this on. If I recall, this was discussed many, many years ago when I served on the KESHA board. And we didn't want to take it on then because we knew this would be extremely challenging. So win, lose or draw, I congratulate the effort. Here's my concern. I was, I heard about you doing this several months ago. And I was really kind of thrilled because one of the first things that I heard was that you were taking into consideration the low socioeconomic schools. And due to the fact that I represent many low socioeconomic schools, I was excited about that because there is a difference in the low socioeconomic schools to your more affluent schools simply due to the fact that the more affluent schools have the funding, the parents do, to send their children to camps during the summer or whenever to learn how to perfect their skill in whatever sport. Whereas the parents of the children in my districts or many of my districts do not have that. So their opportunities happen at the local park, you know? So this is, I was kind of concerned why that didn't get included. But so would you speak to that?
The factor of poverty is really only addressing, all of the factors only address the private schools. There was no reduction factor. That was an option that the committee put before the principals, the reduction factor, very similar to what Minnesota uses. It's all based upon, you know, the population's density and the individual wealth per capita type measures. And they actually reduce in Minnesota. Kansas said, we're not going to go that across all schools and we're not going to reduce the Topeka, the Kansas City, the high poverty schools. We're going to look at the other side of it and look at the no poverty schools and provide an additional weight for them as a result. But no factor that we have influences any of the private, any of the public schools right now. This proposal does not impact the public schools other than they may get leapfrogged and then pushed down to a smaller class. So Wyandotte, who's always on the border of 5A, 6A, may get pumped down to permanently be in 5A because there will be more private schools ahead of them.
Okay. Well, I guess I misunderstood because I had thought that you were considering putting the public schools in that mix to begin with, so.
Originally, that was one of the discussion items, but it was not the one that was ultimately supported.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I'm going to cut this off after one more question. And then I'm sure you'll be around for the whole thing. So in case later on, there may be other questions. Michelle?
Thank you, Chairman Porter. So yeah, I just want to start off by saying I don't ever want to, you know, punish success or competition. But I would be curious about next year, not this year, but next year's open enrollment. There will be more, more of that going on in the public school system. So are they going to be considering as far as the lines within a district that the children typically attend? And then you'll have percentages. Are they going to look at percentages as far as how many were outside of that district? You know, were there any children turned away? Or how many, is it 20%, 15%? When they're competing, are they coming in from another district? Will they be looking at that or will they have any way of looking at that?
The current proposal does not include that type of metric. That might be one of those factors that continues to evolve with this policy once it's adopted. If it's adopted, might be the factor that is used with open enrollment. I will say that 2567, the House bill that deals with, or the substitute Senate bill that deals with the open enrollment does have a statute or does have a component in there that says that you don't set aside the eligibility rules for those kids that come in. So if a student open enrolls across district boundaries, there's transfer students for a year. And at the high school level, at the middle school level, 18 weeks. So their impact would not be immediate, but would be eventual because their impact would not be, you know, after that first year, then they'll be without that transfer title.
Yeah, because it sounds to me like next year, next fall, it's open. I mean, everybody can, anybody can go anywhere. So it used to be where you couldn't do that as much or it was on a case-by-case basis. I'm thinking that's going to play, so now it's going to be like, I know you don't like to use the word recruit, but recruit better or just, you know, there has to be, there's going to be something that's going to be enticing to go to that school. And it may be that they won championships and kids are going to want to go there because they have a really good program or they've established that with their coaching, with their camaraderie, with all the teammates. There's a lot, there's a lot to consider there. So I just wanted, that's something that's not going to happen for a little while, but that may be something to factor in.
We have some time that we'll utilize and continue to review. We are an association driven by our member schools. And when they bring us a topic, our job is to walk through that and to understand what all the consequences, unintended and intended consequences are of those decisions. And that's why, you know, being inclusive of the discussion, having a lengthy period of time for us to study an issue really helps. Now, when things change alongside it, like statute, we've got to adjust. That happened in the middle of this thing moving forward.
Yeah, because it'll, I think it'll be, there'll be some big changes. I would think with the sports, with BAN, with everything. And there's going to be something that someone's going to want to transfer over and because they've seen success there. They want to go to, they want to go where the success is, so. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
The procedure going forward will be, we have three proponents. They will go in this order. Representative Johnson, Christopher Strothman and Jeff Hines. Don't get up yet. It'll be 10 minutes each. Mr. Ferguson, to my right, will warn you when there's one minute left, 30 seconds left, and then time to stop. If it goes that far, I'm going to ask the board members not to. Your time will be uninterrupted. All three of you will make your presentations. And then we'll have questions at the end of that. However, at the request of some of my colleagues, at this point, before we start that process, we'll take a five-minute break. Do you get started? Representative Johnson, as soon as the vice chair sits down, we'll start. Welcome, sir.
Thank you so much. And it's an honor to be here before the board today. Tim Johnson, I represent the 38th District, which is in Leavenworth and to be part of Wyandotte County, starting this next session. I come to you with a background first in criminal justice for many years. And during that time, I was a sports official in football and basketball in the Johnston County, Wyandotte County region. Then retired from there and went into teaching. And I've been both at Wyandotte High School for a few years and then the last few years at the Baser Lindwood District. And that's where I've coached football. So I come to this topic experienced. I've coached at many levels. And I've been part of that issue of schools that have faced the public versus private issues. I did participate with my head coach and others, my athletic director at Baser Lindwood. So I understand what came out in terms of these equalizers and modifiers. And I think it's been a good process. It is a very good process. Couple of things I want to point out. Clearly, our urban or metropolitan areas are different than our rural areas. What takes place in Northeast Kansas is much different than would be out in Central Kansas or other regions or in Wichita. I have seen firsthand the issue of private schools having an advantage. And I've seen it for a positive for the private schools because they're able to obtain star athletes. And sometimes that's been, in a sad way, taking from my Wyandotte County community, athletes that look for an opportunity because they know they're going to get great recognition, championship team. They're getting scholarships, financial assistance to go to this private school, better recognition. And so some of the schools that need these star athletes are losing them to the private schools. I've watched a couple of good athletes leave from Wyandotte, my alma mater. Trust me, I understand championships. I was part of the Wyandotte basketball team when Walt Schubler was there. He won 10 state championships, took second twice, and didn't make it one other year in his 13 years as a coach. He did it as a coach. I understand that concept. But when we take from schools who suffer economically, that's not fair. Is there recruiting? Yes, there is. I have observed it personally over my time and watched schools take athletes from my Baser Lindwood group and go over and then compete against us despite the fact that we have a 10-0 record or 11-0 record. All of a sudden, bam, we're losing by 50 points. And I've seen that with many of the 4A schools in our area. I know it happens. Now, some people have said, no, no, we don't recruit. Yes, they do. This summer, I have an eighth grade, she's going into eighth grade, granddaughter. Love that girl. She happens to be six foot tall right now. Her mother was a college basketball player. She got approached by a representative of one of the private schools and recruited, actively recruited. Well, there's financial aid. If you would like to come, they're looking for this next athlete that will come compete for them. Now, I understand that parochial schools have a right to recruit for members of their faith. But these athletes that we're losing are not necessarily in that category. Nobody asked my daughter if she was a member of that particular religion. And she's not. She attends another church and in fact is in private school, another denomination. I have no problem with a parochial school recruiting within its diocese or members of their faith. They should do that. But most of these star Division One athletes that are going, religion has nothing to do with it. And that's a principle in the ideas of private schools. Another issue that's not always looked at, but I think the committee has done that, is these private schools do not have to take, nor do they in any numbers, the special education students that many of our. students that many of our public districts have to take. Basar Lindwood, if you were a special ed student in our area, you're part of our combine, you're part of our count. But a private school, if you were to check, and we've asked coaches, well, what's your number of special education students? Well, the numbers are very low. So their count is already lower because they're not taking those students. The special ed students are remaining behind. And I know from practical experience that many of our special needs students, while being counted in enrollment purposes, do not participate in sports or athletics at the same level. So that's just another little factor. I would like to thank the ed board. One of my mentors, I will call her, helped me greatly during my first term, especially this last year, counseled me in the hallways a couple of times, and I really do appreciate working with the board on this matter. And I commend the manner in which it's been done, and I applaud that. You have my support and guarantee that I will work legislative on this matter as soon as it's passed. And if it beats those standards, I will work legislatively. At this point, I am unopposed in general or the primary. I'm ready to go to work on this. So you have my commitment, and I've already talked to many legislators, to get this done at the next level. And then I have one other little commitment I'll just share with you now that I have that status, is that we need to take care of special education funding this next year, period, exclamation point. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Christopher Strathman. Welcome to the State Board of Education.
Uh, thank you. Appreciate that. Uh, before I get started, if, um, I do have a neurological disorder that affects my voice, so if I sound like I'm straining or if it cuts out, that's why. Okay, so please understand that. My name is Chris Strathman. I'm from McPherson. I've been a girls' basketball coach at McPherson High for 27 years, the last 17 as a head coach. I think it is important for the state board to hear from a coach's perspective on this side. I speak especially for the community and public schools in Class 4A. The state of Kansas and KESHA must finally try to, to, try something to address the issue of private school dominance in far too many cases. The fact that this multiplier proposal would only apply to those who first meet the success criteria is what makes this the most fair proposal that I have seen. I commend the committee that put this proposal together, the KESHA Board of Directors that passed this on to the KESHA member schools, and to the KESHA member schools who are voting in such a way that brings us here today at the State Board of Education. Since I've been at McPherson High School for 27 years, our girls' basketball program has dealt with the public versus private issue as much as anyone in the postseason. We have played Bishop Miege 10 times, St. Thomas Aquinas 4, Bishop Carroll 5, and Cape and Mount Carmel once. That is 20 postseason matchups in 27 seasons. While all of the aforementioned private schools and others have built-in advantages that the rest of us do not, the biggest problem and most of the contacts complaints that I am sure KESHA has received has been due to Bishop Bishop Miege being at the Class 4A level. Due to these consistent and very common matchups of private schools during my career, especially in the postseason, I had accepted it as just part of the deal of being a coach at McPherson. Seeing how this impacted teams, schools, and communities during the most recent Class 4A state basketball tournament gave me a much different perspective since I was watching simply as a fan. This past season marked the first time since 2016 that our girls have not been tasked with facing either Aquinas or Miege at state. We got beat by Wellington in the first round at state. This allowed me to just sit back and watch the rest of the weekend. Immediately after our game, Miege pounded a very good Andale team by about 40. They were up by 30-plus in the first quarter. It's a state tournament game. In the semifinals, an undefeated Wellington team that had beat us, they then lost by 40 to Miege in the semis, and then Indora was beaten easily in the state final. Miege won their three games at the state tournament by a combined 105 points. That is not how a state tournament is supposed to look. Any matchup that involved just community teams, which there were several of those games obviously at state, were all excellent games. They were all decided in the last minute and most in the final seconds. That's how even it was. Being able to just observe this and watch this unfold, this past state tournament prompted me to become involved with this process. None of what I say is meant as a personal attack at all on any of the coaches at the private schools. I have had good relationships with these coaches, and I have the utmost respect for their success. That doesn't change the fact that I strongly feel an adjustment to our classification system is long overdue, and the momentum for this change has never been stronger. Please listen to some numbers regarding private school success across several different sports, both boys and girls. Girls' basketball, 23 state titles by Bishop Miege, 10 by St. Thomas Aquinas. Miege has won seven of eight since dropping to Class 4A in 2014. Aquinas has now won six consecutive in Class 5A. Girls' soccer, since 4 through 1A became a division in 2011, no public school has won a state championship. St. James Academy, Wichita Trinity each have won. Tpica Hayden has three, and Bishop Miege has won the last six. In 30 years of girls' soccer since 1993, St. Thomas Aquinas has 20 state championships. Volleyball. Bishop Miege has 25-plus state championships. St. James has nine, and they just opened in 2005. St. Thomas Aquinas, eight. Bishop Carroll, seven. Tpica Hayden, five. That is 54 state championships won in volleyball by those five private schools, which have all been in Class 4A and 5A. Total dominance for decades in those classes. Girls' tennis, and a little bit of boys' tennis. This sport began in 1985 at the KESHA level for girls. In that time, Wichita Collegiate has won a whopping 33 state championships. Team state championships, 33 titles in 37 years of competition. Throw in 26 titles that Collegiate has won on the boy's side, and they are just shy of 60 state championships for tennis in their school's history. Class 4A football, no public school has won since Bueller in 2013. The average score on those eight state title games was 54 to 21. Bishop Miege has won six consecutive, or had won six consecutive, and St. James has won the last two in Class 4A, with an average margin of 33 points in state title games. Boys' soccer, from 86 to 91, only one classification was involved, and those were all won by what I would consider to be 6A schools. No private schools won during those years. That started in 92. And at that time, it was 6A, and then 5A through 1A were all together. In 2000, that became 6A, 5A, and then 4 through 1A were all together. So three state champions have been crowned each year since 2000. Since 1992, I counted 80 state championships in boys' soccer total. 38 of those were won by privates, but sometimes those numbers can even be misleading. That is because in 6A, for 24 of those years, there were no private schools in Class 6A. So you can really change that number to 38 of a possible 56 state championships won in boys' soccer and by private schools since 1992. That is nearly 70% of all boys' soccer championships won. There are other sports that have similar patterns, but I think my point has been made about these dominant private school examples that you may find. Please feel free to check the KESHA website for a history of champions for all sports. How do we get here today? Mr. Faflick did a fantastic job of recapping the entire process. He showed the votes by classification, how those panned out. What the screen didn't mention, though, was the fact that there were a lot of schools that did not vote, and any non-vote was counted as a no vote. 68 schools did not cast their vote across the state. So a good portion of those no votes were actually not votes at all, and that's the way they, those had to be counted, which I understand. I want to highlight 6A and 4A only. What are some takeaways from Class 4A? Because that vote differential was 32 to 4. There were two automatic no's, so two schools did not vote. So really, the only two votes that were true no's would have been Tpica Hayden and Bishop Miege. Class 4A was 32 to 4, easily the largest margin. For anyone who has followed this process, you know exactly why Class 4A was such an easy win. Dominance in multiple sports by one KC Metro private school in particular in 4A is very likely the biggest single reason why some of this proposal has gained so much traction. Everyone across the state sees it regardless of class, but not everyone really wants it addressed. There's a reason for that, and voting results from certain classes were definitely not a surprise, especially Class 6A. Class 6A votes were 6, 6, yes, and 30, no. 12 of those no's were automatic no's because non-votes, but 30 were no. Why is that? There are currently zero private schools in Class 6A, and they absolutely love it that way. This is a fact, and we knew the vote would come out that way. To myself and others, this is also one of the most solid justifications for why this proposal does need to go through. If the very largest schools in Kansas don't want private schools in their classifications, doesn't that speak volumes about the frustrations for the rest of us? Projections based on 21, 22 enrollment figures, if the multiplier system was in place, 6A would then have four private schools, Aquinas, St. James, Cape, and Bishop Carroll. Two of those no votes were Hutchinson and Liberal. Currently, the two smallest schools in 6A by enrollment. If the proposal passes, they will likely drop down to 5A, so they benefit by that. And then they would probably deal with one private school, which would be Miege pumping up instead of four. So there are clear reasons why schools vote the way that they do. But again, the strongest justification for me is the way 6A voted, they want no part of it. They don't want them there. I thank you guys for your time and for allowing me to speak today. I appreciate your time. I'd be happy to answer questions after our proponents I just finished. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Jeff Hines. And welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Forder, members of the Board of Education. My name is Jeff Hines. I'm the principal of Paley High School, and I stand before you today wearing many hats. First, I am speaking on behalf of the entire Frontier League. I am a member of the KESHA Board of Directors, and I was also part of the Classification Committee, which drafted this proposal. I also want to share that I am a parent of private school students, as well as all three of my daughters went to the Catholic school that's in our community. First thing I want to do, I'd be remiss if I didn't point out, wow, those two gentlemen that represented Washburn Rural High School, Gian and Zach, are impressive. And as a former high school debater, just blown away by what they discussed with you today, I can still tell you the four resolutions from my four years in high school. Debate was that much of a defining part of my high school experience. Number two, only behind my participation in the National FFA Organization in agricultural education. One of the things that stood out to me was that they are the first ever national champions that come from a public, non-magnet school. It stood out to me for two reasons. Number one, it's never happened before. It points out the glaring and distinct differences between private schools and public schools that they were the first ever accomplished at in the year of 2022. The other thing that it pointed out to me is that this is not just an issue that we are struggling with in the state of Kansas, it's in fact a nationwide issue. So why are we here today? We're here today because the Board of Directors and all member schools have the opportunity to be heard, believe that there's a competitive imbalance in the state of Kansas, and that something should be done about it. In fact, nearly all states at some time have dealt with the competitive imbalance issue. In fact, in Kansas, while less than 8% of our schools are winning nearly 40% of the championships, five times what you would expect them to do, and you find that they have one thing in common, there are private member schools. And so when that takes, takes place, you need to do something about it. When I became a school administrator, this was something that I had observed for a long period of time. We went through that window of time from 2006 to 2016, where KESHA had studied the issue, found competitive imbalance existed, yet was caught in limbo and did nothing. And that's not firing a shot across the bow, it's just momentum and a grassroots effort hadn't taken place yet. I continue to be concerned with disparity in the competitive imbalance in our state, and so I conducted personally a survey in conjunction with Randy Heatherly from Gerard, and all member schools were submitted or sent a survey, had an 82% response rate. Significant, okay? We're not talking about 20 schools from across the state that responded. In my personal survey, 80% response rate, 82% supported doing something about competitive imbalance. Wow. 80% of schools responded, 82% said we have a problem. Now, that's easy to define that a problem exists. What's hard is to develop the, the, to bring everybody together, to find a cohesive plan that all can agree with. And in fact, one of the slides that Mr. Faflick displayed showed a nearly equal bar graph with a whole bunch of different options. That's what happens. Everyone knows that there's a problem, but how do you, how do you come forward and say, this is what we want to hang our hat on and say, this is what we want to try? So in response to my survey along with Mr. Heatherly, KESHA decided to conduct their own, and their findings were very similar, that there's a problem, it's difficult to figure out what the next step is, but we've got to do something. And so thankfully, they put a committee together and gave us the opportunity to draft the proposal, which is here before you today. One thing I want to remind us of, the Kansans can motto includes a statement that Kansas leads the world, dot, dot, dot. What I'll say is in terms of competition and making a level balance or balanced playing field, we're behind the rest of the nation, as more than half of states have something in place to hopefully promote competitive balance. The committee was composed of a diverse group of educators, parents, state board of education representatives, legislators were invited from all sizes and parts of the state. The easy thing to do that day, and frankly, where we started was, well, let's just copy what somebody else's doing. You know, Missouri tried a 1.35 multiplier. Let's do that. That's easy, but it's not right. And so we rolled our sleeves up, we dug in, we had critical conversations with people that had opinions and polar opposite ends of this discussion, and we came together with a strong consensus that we should move forward with a plan that is unique for the state of Kansas and dissimilar to any other proposal that's currently being implemented in any other state activity association. We looked at the issues in our state by hearing from the different member schools and said, this is what is likely best for Kansas schools. But I also want to remind you this, don't punish all the private schools for the success of some. And that was heard loud and clear, and that's why that gatekeeper component of the number of state championships determines whether a school should qualify for a multiplier or not. And so the difficult thing was, how do you focus on the contributing factors that can be quantified and determine what weighting should be put on those to create competitive balance? And so geography, the, the low SES versus high SES schools, as well as the number of championships won, are easily identifiable factors that determine successful schools versus unsuccessful private schools and can be quantified. And so I think it's important to do that. So let's talk about the vote. 41 to 23, I think, was the number. Nearly, nearly two-thirds of the Board of Directors voted yes, not quite, but nearly. And so when we put it out for a vote for schools, had to have a majority of classes and a majority of schools. Keep in mind, it was a voluntary vote. We weren't required to vote. Of the votes that were returned as a yes, it required a signature from the high school principal, as well as a superintendent's signature, okay? 219 of our state's member schools took the time to do that and cast a yes ballot, okay? Critical conversations with your local board of education, obviously a part of that as well, 219. The number of no ballots that were actually cast with a superintendent and principal signature was 52. Only 52 schools in our state took the time to cast a no ballot. So of the actual ballots that were returned, more than 80% were marked yes. Now, when you factor in all the non-responses, which is part of the process, the supporting number falls to 62. But keep in mind that a majority of the no votes were non-responses. A majority of the no's were non-responses. So once again, overwhelming support. I'll say this, there was a disparity between the larger schools, classes 5A and 6A, were the only two that did not pass with majority. 5A was an exact tie. There were more no votes casted in 5A and 6A than all the other classes combined. Now, my key points. Well, first, this has been a problem for decades. Now, my key points. Well, first, this has been a problem for decades. The '06-'07 committee sanctioned by CACIA pointed this out, but the first real solution that's ever been presented, made it through the Board of Directors and then passed and adopted by the member schools, it's in front of you today. So this isn't something that occurred overnight. It took a grassroots effort. It took a committee from all corners of the state to come forward and determine what's best. And so I want you to know the seriousness and intentionality that was given to lots of different options before settling on this. The other thing I'll say is this, in my independent survey, which was in my written testimony, this map is from 2016. From the responses that I got, an eighty percent response rate, there were only two counties in southwest Kansas that did not have a member school within their boundaries that supported changing to level the playing field. This is not a metropolitan issue in Kansas City, or Wichita, or Topeka. And at that time, this is what the yeses looked like. Even distribution throughout the entirety of the state of Kansas. And so I promise you, if you look at the individual constituents and school districts that you represent, you're going to find widespread support from the membership in that regard. The other thing that I'd like to point out is, why not do this for all schools? Something that we talked at length about. Simply stated, the data does not show the discrepancy and the disproportionate competitive imbalance in the public schools as it does in the private. That's why that opportunity was set aside and focus was given elsewhere. Does this proposal take anything away from students in the state of Kansas? It's an important consideration. No. Everyone still has the opportunity to participate, which is the most important thing. Ms. Arnold spoke to that earlier, the lessons that you learn. It's no different than showing livestock. If you have the grand champion at the state fair, wow, what a lifetime achievement. But the lessons that that student or that child learned, and learning to care for an animal and be responsible on a daily basis for the care of that, far outweigh the success in the championship when they hold that purple ribbon. The other thing that I'd like to say is this, no state has ever adopted, keep in mind, Kansas is late to the party here, has ever adopted a proposal similar to ours, meaning to do something to create better competitive balance. No state has ever adopted it, tried it, and then went back to the status quo. Never once has that happened. Our classification system has been a journey. It's changed and evolved over time. I have no doubt that it may need to evolve even further after this. You may hear words from opponents that are scary, like it's discriminatory, punitive, or unfair. But I'll say this, how can we look in the eyes of our student participants right now, in activities or athletics, and say, the final score of a state championship basketball game won by a private school by more than fifty points is fair? And part of CACIA's belief system states quality and fairness in interscholastic activity programs and promoting a positive school and community relations. Those exist now, but can be strengthened if the state board would further this proposal. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this time, if there are questions, please, let me remind my colleagues that we need to, this is not the time to debate. This is the time to ask clarifying questions. We'll have ample time to debate amongst ourselves later. Any questions from members? I see none. At this time, we have three opponents, Jeff Andrews, Martin Straub, and Nick Campagnone. Each will be given the ten minutes uninterrupted, and then we will have, the board will have opportunity to ask clarifying questions. And welcome, sir.
Good morning. Thank you for allowing me time to speak today, and thank you guys for your service. I come to you this morning with a little bit of a different perspective. I spent my first fifteen years in public schools as a teacher, coach, and administrator, and then I'm now entering my third year as superintendent of schools for the Diocese of Salina. The Salina Diocese consists of fifteen total schools, including five high schools in north-central and northwest Kansas. Those are Thomas More Prep Marion and Hayes, Tipton Catholic, St. John's in Beloit, Sacred Heart in Salina, and St. Xavier's in Junction City. Last year, we had three-hundred-and-seventy-two students in grades nine through twelve, ninety-one percent of them are Catholic. Just this last spring, we wrapped up our five-year accreditation cycle, and a survey of our families showed the top three reasons why they enrolled their children in Catholic education in our diocese. They were Catholic identity, class size, and academic reputation of our schools, not because of our sports programs. The proposed multiplier instituted today would only impact one of our high schools this year, Sacred Heart. Sacred Heart is a 1A, 2A-sized high school located in a 5A school district. We have five team titles in the last five years. We are over twenty percent free and reduced lunch, so that multiplier would not go into effect this year. However, because our school is so small with an influx of a few students here and there, we could drop below twenty percent. Over the last five years, Sacred Heart has won four golf titles as a team on the boys' side. We missed out on one due to the cancellation of the 2020 season. We have a group of committed golfers who love the sport and play anytime the weather allows them to. This has led to much success at our level, and we're very proud of them. Our girls' tennis team also won a team title in the fall of 2020. It was a very small team of girls who enjoy the sport, and we were pumped to present them with the state banner this last year to hang on the wall. The success of our boys' golf team and girls' tennis team in the last five years would have a major impact for all the students and teams at our school. Just one example I'll talk about is our football team. Win totals over the last three seasons for Sacred Heart are zero, two, and zero. Going two and twenty-five the last three seasons against schools with similar enrollment. Moving up a classification due to titles in golf and tennis does not make sense, nor does it seem fair to those students. In the last twenty-seven games, we have been outscored 1,195 to 197. That's nine-hundred-and-ninety-eight points, or a hundred-and-forty-two touchdowns. Not a lot of field goals are kicked in 1A, 2A football. The average score of each contest over time is forty-four to seven. We do not have our own home field. We share with Kansas Wesleyan, walk over there every single day. There are no students from Salina South or Salina Central knocking down our doors to come play football or other sports at Sacred Heart. All of our golfers have gone to school since preschool in our building. Our enrollment has declined at Sacred Heart the last five years, and some stakeholders have even considered moving to eight-man, but schools officials decided against it at this time because we don't have our own field to play on, using Kansas Wesleyan, we just can't paint the new lines on that. We'd have to put out cones every game, and that's not something that we're going to do at this time. We are competitive people, and we all love sports and what they do for our schools. Adding this proposed multiplier to private schools would purposely hurt our students. There are public schools all over the state opening their doors to out-of-district students, even posting to social media just this week that it's first come, first served, and bragging about their schools and what they can get if they come to their school district. Please consider all the private schools when thinking about the multiplier, not just ones in certain counties or certain areas of the state. The presidents of the Catholic high schools in Johnson County could not be here today, so they're part of the Kansas City Archdiocese, Randy Salisbury of Bishop Miege, Brian Schenk of St. Thomas Aquinas, and Andy Tulliki of St. James Academy. They're welcoming teachers back in their community today. They shared with me some of their concerns. All three of these high schools, all three of these Catholic high schools would move up in all sports if a petition was developed. They have shared this with the supporters of the multiplier. So if this proposal was declined, if we could have a petition to move up, they would do it. Open enrollment will have a major impact on student enrollment. This should bring public schools into discussion of the multiplier. Schools are making plans to recruit students from other school districts. This should be considered if a multiplier is going to be used. The current plan hurts some schools because of the strength of one program, and this is not fair. If a multiplier is the route that needs to move forward, the current plan's numbers are an overreaction to the actual problem. There are more reasonable approaches to get the desired result. Also, not all the members of the Wichita Diocese wanted to be here, or they all wanted to be here, but they couldn't due to some health issues going on right now, but they are also, you know, in support of us as well. So thank you for listening today and considering all the students in the state of Kansas.
Thank you, sir. Martin Straub. And welcome to the State Board of Education.
Thank you, sir. Chairman Porter, members of the board, Commissioner Watson. I've been at your board meetings as a public school person. Today, I'm here as a parochial school administrator. My name is Marty Straub. I started my career at Capen Mount Carmel High School as a twenty-two-year-old kid from Phillipsburg, Kansas, via Fort H State University. And for eight years, I taught and coached there when Mr. McNeese, I believe, was over at Bishop Carroll. After that time, I went to Derby High School as associate principal for two years, worked with Dr. Singer over there, went out to Hayes, was going to stay there five years, and twenty-seven years later, my wife and I left there last year. This is my second year at Capen as the athletic director. During my service as a building administrator, I've served on the Kansas Association of Secondary School Principals. It used to be called that. I was the president of that, as an assistant principal, actually, and became principal at Hayes High School for eight years. I want you to know that I have a deep passion for kids, athletics, academics, both public and parochial. I'm here to ask you to vote against the private school modifier. During my career in the public and private schools, I experienced many positive CACIA changes. This is not, this proposal is not one of them. Shotgun approach. Applying the modifier to all schools' sports, regardless of the success of specific sports, is irrational. Please allow me to use our school, Capen Mount Carmel, as an example. In the last five years, we've won six state championships. Two girls' golf, four girls' scores on each of those teams, there's eight students. Two boys' golf championships, four scores are counted towards state championship in each of those, and one bowling championship. Five scores are counted for that. A total of twenty-eight students would qualify Capen Mount Carmel High School for the modifier out of over two thousand participants over five years at Capen. Recruitment of students. Let's be honest, and you've heard it today, I'm so very happy that I don't have to mention the schools' names. Let's be honest, frustration over success of a few private schools in Kansas is why we're here today. There is an assumption by some administrators and coaches who compete against those schools in the Kansas City area that all private and public schools also recruit. It's simply not true. In the four high schools of the Wichita Diocese, in Hutchinson, Pittsburgh, and two in Wichita, ninety-five to ninety-nine percent of our students come from one of our parish elementary schools. Of that number, ninety-nine percent of our students have been in the Catholic school system their entire time since kindergarten. Our diocese's only recruiting effort occurs at each of our Catholic churches when kids are in kindergarten. We don't ask whether they can play sports at that age. Unfair, large, undefined boundary to draw from. Argument is often made that parochial, private schools have a larger boundary to draw from, and is in turn is unfairly advantageous. Please allow me to point out that many, many public schools, including many of those who have developed single or multiple sports dynasties as measured by CACIA state championships, have open enrollment already. As a building administrator in Hayes High School for twenty-seven years on the great American desert, I welcome students from Hayes, but I also welcome them from Victoria, and Ellis, and Russell, and LaCrosse, and Natoma, and any other student that was willing to drive to our school. Almost every public school district in the Wichita area and other Kansas metro areas, I'm sure, also have open enrollment. Also, the undefined boundary complaint does not take into consideration the many intra-district transfers that occur in larger districts that really don't fall under the same transfer rules. All of us who are here today testifying against and for this proposal know of instances where student athletes will play, wrestle, run, and compete for different schools in the same school year without bona fide movement. That is the truth. I'm here to say that, I am not here to say that recruiting and transfers are not an issue in the Kansas schools. In some cases, it's ridiculous. In many cases, it's ridiculous. But to somehow present this as a public, a pure public or private parochial issue is unfounded, unfair, and very naive. During the last Kansas legislative session, as mentioned earlier, Kansas passed and Governor Kelly signed the omnibus education bill that will allow for the requirement of open enrollment in our schools. In short, any public school who has room will be required to take students who want to enroll in their district. So to say that parochial and private schools have an unfair advantage because of unlimited access to students is inaccurate now. Perhaps a wiser, more well-thought action at this time would be to observe and study the effects of the omnibus bill and make adjustments accordingly. The modifier proposal is not the solution to the many issues at hand that include but are not limited to those that you've heard today. I actually listed them, but they've already said those issues. If there are CACIA member schools violating rules and issues of undue influence, recruiting, and blatant cheating, they should be reprimanded, suspended from postseason, and/or removed from the association altogether. This shotgun approach proposal punishes all private parochial schools because of an imbalance of high-level success of a few schools in our state. I would challenge anybody doing the statistics that were shared today and take away three, perhaps four, parochial schools in our state and see what those numbers looked like. It wouldn't be nearly as imbalanced as it is, as what was shared. I respectfully ask you to vote against this proposal. Thank you for listening, and I pray you make the decision for all kids. I do want to say, I stood shoulder to shoulder with these guys, I've been on the board, and I think everybody's intentions are good. And I appreciate, Mr. Porter, you're saying, treat everybody nice. We, I think we always have. We just disagree on issues, and disagreement isn't a bad thing. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Nick. Nick, I thought you retired. You know, we keep seeing you over and over again.
Most of my time, I'm in my t-shirt.
Okay, well, I understand failing retirement, so go ahead.
Thank you for inviting me, Chairman and Commissioner. Actually, I was going to do some testifying on my own, but Jamie Feendai, who's the president, replaced me in cares, could not make it for this meeting. In fact, the Catholic School District had their principals' meeting, and they're all down with whatever. So I will read Jamie's statement after my statement. For those that don't know me, my name is Nick Campagnone. I've been a school administrator in this state for forty-eight years. I've served almost every four quarters of the state, either as a teacher, a principal, or a superintendent. And I always remember this specific issue always coming up every few years. And it has been an emotional issue on both sides, and I respect that. But first of all, I want to mention that the primary reason for his bidding in sports comes from the mission that I interpret coming from CACIA about participating in character development and life skills. And we all share that vision, and when it comes down to it, it's all about our kids. But I have concerns about the actual proposal being one-sided. One of the concerns is, when we look at statistics, most of you know I am highly involved on the accreditation side for both the public system and the private system. And when we use statistics, we can use it any way we want to. But I will also say that, and when we look at the governance issues and the statistics of private and public schools, they are different. So sometimes it's difficult to compare what may look like valid set of statistics, but whenever you go down and look at the specific areas, you're going to give a different story. For example, when we look at the private schools in the state of Kansas, we talk about where they reside. About eighty-five percent of our private schools in the state, and I'm going back to what I know from the accreditation side, come from feeder schools. Those feeder schools have different addresses across the state of Kansas. They have different socioeconomic statuses in that state, in those schools, and they feed into most of those high schools. Now, there are some schools that are independent from feeder schools, and they do recruit. But when I look at their statistics, I look at where they are in their neighborhood, and they reflect who they are serving. So sometimes when you look at that statistics, you have to look at what the background is. The other issue is, basically, I hear a lot about the socioeconomic status and the free and reduced lunch. Again, I will take Salina, serves in the city Salina, but it also has some outlining rural schools, which we do attract. So we're not just representing Salina, and the high school there being Sacred Heart is not representing the Salina area, but also the rural schools. So you need to keep that looking at, again, about the history of... So you need to keep that, looking at, again, about the history of the school and its location. I do want to, I picked on my ears, because I've heard it twice, or two or three times with, this morning, about special ed in private schools. Some, some schools don't have the capacity to serve private school students. I, as a superintendent, have gone out and made sure that every student that wanted special ed services, that resigning in one of our schools, we made sure they got those services. But we work on different rules, not governed by our schools, but governed by the state. So we cannot possibly serve everyone because it is up to the local LEA. You need to know that, because I think that that's a fallacy in many cases. The proposal narrows one factor and seems to punish the schools that have, have a winning tradition. It is that criteria that we should look at other schools also, when, is this private schools? Why are they winning? Why do they have that tradition? I was here before you a few weeks ago, a couple of months ago, about, talking about climate and culture. I respect schools, including the public schools, that have deep cultural traditions, and, and they have been successful, both academically and in athletics, and that's been their tradition, and people are attracted to those schools. Going back to the issue about some of our rural schools being public schools and private schools, their statistics are different. They have low economical status, but that does not mean that, that makes any difference in what they do and what they portray in attracting their students and being successful at the sports level. And so I encourage you to investigate that. If we pass this proposal, should it also be looked at in other areas of the state? And I'm going to caution you, open enrollment, it's starting to get out there. Whether on this board, I know where they stood on that issue, but the fact it's being promoted by the legislature, if that goes full blast, what does this proposal do for the rest of the schools in the state of Kansas, both public and private? As far as recruiting, I think it was just said, most of the schools have a feeder school. They're built in. About 85 to 90% of the students that enroll in most of our private schools in the state come from those feeder schools, which start down in pre-K. Yes, there could be one or two students that move into the community where there is competition. If there are violations from CACIA, sanction those schools if they're, and not following those violations, and any other school. But, you know, the problem I have here is we're kind of taking a broad brush and trying to paint over everything where I think, where I heard this morning, the issue is in a certain location, certain schools, and perhaps CACIA should negotiate with those, those schools to see if they could find a, a solution to those issues instead of all the rest of the private schools in the state being penalized. In summary, like I said, there are many factors besides just private and public schools that schools are successful. And whether the disproportionate number of championships, I can say they are on both sides, but then again, I have to look at the leadership and the cultural schools, and what we do forget is more important. So I'm asking you to not vote for this proposal. I'm asking you to find a solution that is best for everyone. That's my, the end of my statement.
And pause that a second. There's only about two and a half minutes left, so if you don't get finished with Jamie's presentation.
I'm going to read Jamie's statement.
I know, but if it's longer than that, I'm going to have, I'll have to cut you off.
I understand.
But, but you can submit it to Barbara, and it will still get to all of us.
Okay.
So we paused your time, so I'm not taking your time now.
How many minutes do I have?
You have two minutes and 15 seconds.
I'll summarize it.
Okay.
And I'll give you, I'll give you a statement.
Okay.
Jamie's have Kansas State, Kansas Association of Independent Schools. We represent 35,000 students across the state. Many of them, or most of them, private. Many of them are from the three dioceses of Salina, serving the high schools. We have member schools that have spoken before CACIA, arguing against this proposal. CARES feels that it's unfair to all the private schools in the state of Kansas. We feel there can be a solution, maybe negotiate with some of the schools that we seem to be looking at that are specifically, some schools that, I understand, at least they have been trying to negotiate some kind of a solution. Jamie also brings out the, the issue of the open enrollment. We're now seeing a lot of competition out there among all schools, and the whole recruitment issue probably also needs to be addressed. So, so CARES is taking the position again that this proposal is not fair to all and not representative of all the private schools in the state of Kansas.
Thank you very much. And we remind everybody that questions need to be clarifying. This is not time to debate, but Ann has a question.
Yeah, my question's actually for Bill, so I can wait if he's going to be back.
Okay, are there other questions for the opponents? Okay, I see none. You're welcome this day, because we're going to talk about this maybe for a while. Ann has a question, and this evidently, Bill is to you.
Bill Pathlake?
Yeah.
Okay, my question's really about process at this point. Even though there's been a lot of talk about, well, could you just let Bishop Miege into 5A? You can't do that unless the law changes, right?
That's correct.
So unless this goes forward, you don't have that option to negotiate anything?
We're in the middle of a process, and that system is working with the proposal that's in hand. If this one is not supported, then we go back to the drawing board, and, you know, that might be something that the membership would consider, but it would have to go through that cycle of board approval, then member school vote, and then back to you again, because that would deviate from the classification by student attendance process.
You've got two things here. You've got the statute change, and then you have the regulation change. And as I understand it, the legislature, and maybe it's different for CACIA, let's say they change the laws, they have the flexibility to do something other than straight student count, but would they actually, during the next session, approve that set of regulations? Or does it go through the usual thing that we all go through, or it goes to Secretary of State, or the AG and all that stuff?
Those are steps we're going to learn, because it's not been a process I've been through.
Yeah, because I don't think, if you sent these regulations up, the legislature actually approves that. That's not what they do. There's another, so the only thing the legislature would do would be expand the flexibility to do something different, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
And my understanding is that we only have one option. We can't modify the proposal. Whenever we vote, we'll vote yes or no on the proposal that, that has been sent to us by the membership of CACIA.
Yes, sir.
Okay. At this point, I'm closing the hearing. But at this point, the board can have any discussion they want. This will be on the agenda for the September meeting as a action item, and at that point, we will also have opportunity for discussion. Yeah, discussion, but not, discussion amongst board members. Jean.
I just had a question, and I'm not sure that we're able to answer this, but what's the effect of a regulatory change without a statutory change?
You're out of my pay grade.
You asked an excellent legal question that Ann started to propose also, and I know that CACIA's legal team has looked at this. I think we would want to get their team and our attorneys to give you that answer. I don't think I would want to speculate on that, because I also have not been a part of trying to change CACIA regulations, so.
I want to thank everybody that participated. We appreciate, we will take everything under consideration. If there is additional information, anybody wants to provide additional written information, if you'll make sure that Barbara gets that, it will be distributed to all of us. We're going to take everything under consideration and make a decision, one way or the other, at our meeting in September. That will be an action item, and I understand that, that our responsibility, as mentioned before, we don't have, we do not have the authority to make any modifications. Some modifications have been suggested. We do not have that authority. As I understand it, it'll be an up or down, yes or no vote, and then depending on that vote, it either goes to the legislature or goes back to CACIA for reconsideration. But again, thank you for your participation. Thank you for your interest. I say this is an emotional issue. I was on a committee in another state 35 years ago discussing this exact same thing, and at that time, we decided we didn't have the fortitude to do anything about it, so we didn't. So that being said, thank everybody for their participation, and we are adjourned. Thank you.